...of the City Council, the City of Moreno Valley. On February 20th, 2018, our first presentation will be the Officer of the Quarter. And our Mayor, Dr. Xiong Gutierrez, will recognize Officer of the Quarter, or the Fourth Quarter, Diana Moreno. If you could please come forward.
All right. I just wanted to say a few words before I hand you the certificate for the Officer of the Quarter, to Officer Diana Moreno. She really is a great person, especially in our Police Department. In particular, she has earned a reputation for training Moreno Valley Police Explorers with discipline and enthusiasm. Officer Moreno is also integral to the success of the annual Christmas Cheer Program, organizing donations for Stuff the Bus, and blood drives, in addition to her law enforcement duties. Officer Moreno, your efforts throughout the year, organizational skills, and positive attitude have made the events very successful. In honor of all of what you do, we would like to present you with this certificate. On behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Moreno Valley, thank you for all that you do for our youth and our community. Congratulations on making Officer of the Quarter. Congratulations. Would you like to say a few words? Are you sure? Okay, all right. Okay, well, let's go ahead. A picture? And then... Did you want to like to say a few words? Oh, yes. Yes, definitely. Yeah, then we can take a big picture with all of us.
Let's give Deputy Moreno another hand. Okay, next, we have the Classified Employee of the Fourth Quarter. If Margie Gutierrez can please step forward.
I also would like to say a few words as well about Margie. I want to just say that tonight, we're actually starting to reinstate the practice of recognizing the classified employees who support the sworn officers of the Moreno Valley Police Department. Margie Gutierrez was named as a Classified Employee of the Fourth Quarter for 2017 for her ability not only to adapt, but thrive in unanticipated situations. In the fourth quarter of 2017, for example, Ms. Gutierrez was unexpectedly placed in the role of District Attorney Laasan. In the short time that she was in that role, Margie adapted to the new demands of her position, implemented a new record system, resolved older issues, and did so while maintaining high customer service standards. And so, on behalf of the Moreno Valley City Council and for my office, we would like to congratulate you as a Classified Employee of the Quarter. Congratulations again. We have two certificates. This is on behalf of my office, and then this one is as well on behalf of the Moreno Valley Police Department as well. Would you like to say a few words?
No.
You're sure? Okay, all right. Okay. Everyone's shy today.
Thank you. Congratulations to both Diana Moreno and Margie Gutierrez once again on behalf of the City Council. That concludes our special presentations. The regular City Council meeting will resume at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Good evening, and welcome to the joint meeting of the City Council, the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, City as Successor Agency, for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. The City Council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this meeting to order on February 20th, 2018, at 6:05 PM. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Frank Wright. Please remain standing for the invocation which will be given by...we'll figure it out. We'll figure it out.
Everyone, please face the flag. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to give the invocation? Any invocation? Okay, we have Rafael. We were supposed to have a pastor here tonight, but he might be running late, so we'll have Rafael.
Bow our heads. Father God, we want to thank you for tonight, Father God. We ask that you give us wisdom and knowledge, Father God, that you will give us all peace and understanding, that tonight will be a fruitful evening, Father. For those that cannot be here, Father God, bless them. For those that are homeless, Father God, find a place for them to live, a place for them to be warm tonight, Father God. It will be cold for them. We thank you for all the things that you're doing in Moreno Valley, through Moreno Valley, not only to help ourselves, but to help our region, Father God. We thank you, and we love you. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
And thank you, Rafael, for taking that initiative. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Gaiba?
I am here.
Councilmember Marquez?
Here.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tembaca?
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Present. Staff introductions, please.
Mad Hocke is not a city clerk.
Marshall Ironman, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Mark Kazanowicz, City Attorney.
Tom DeSantis, City Manager.
Alan Brock, Assistant City Manager.
Mike Lee, Economic Development Director.
Rick Sandsmeyer, Acting Community Development Director.
David Kerlowitz, Chief Police.
Kathleen Sanchez, Director, Human Resources.
Mel Alonso, Parks and Community Services.
Michael Wolf, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Thank you to the staff, and thank you for all you do. Just a friendly reminder that we currently are offering the Spanish translation services. If anyone is interested in this feature, the devices can be checked out in the back. Before we hear public comments this evening, I ask and encourage everyone participating to keep their comments respectful towards each other, especially towards the individuals at the podium. I embrace and support the First Amendment right to free speech, including everyone's right to speak at this meeting and share his or her views about issues concerning our city. But we can accomplish more as a city and as private citizens by being civil and respectful towards one another in this meeting. Finally, I ask that speakers bear in mind that comments are limited to three minutes for each speaker, and that you refrain from duplicating comments already made by others other than to note that you agree with the comment. Public comments on matters on the agenda will be taken up as the item is called for business between staff's report and City Council deliberation. Those wishing to speak on any subject not on the agenda, so anything in general, under the jurisdiction of the City Council, may speak now. Those wishing to speak should complete and submit a blue speaker slip to the bailiff. And again, there is a three-minute time limit per person. All remarks and questions shall be addressed to the presiding officer, myself, or to the City Council. The City Clerk will call three names at a time. Please move to the front of the room when you hear your name called. In order to preserve the meeting decorum, council will not respond during public comments. Any council comments or questions to staff will be addressed during the council closing comments. This is for the non-agenda items. So Madam Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight for non-agenda?
Non-agenda, six so far.
Okay. Go ahead and call three at a time.
Rafael Burguerras, Frank Wright, Daryl Tarrell.
And this is on non-agenda items, right?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, residents, and guests.
One second, Rafael. I just want to make sure that it's working.
The timer's online.
Okay. Is there a way to display it here for the public? No?
I don't have access to it.
Okay. All right, that's okay. So...
It's gonna take me a couple of minutes.
You know what? Go ahead and start. I think this one works here.
Just let me know when.
On my end. I just wanted you guys to see it, but go ahead.
It helps a lot when you see the numbers.
It does, yeah.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
No problem.
Appreciate that. Like I said in my prayer, and I know that we come to this subject every year, when it's real cold in Moreno Valley, we think about the homeless. And we got quite a few of them now living in our city, especially along the freeway, behind big buildings. You can actually see them when you're driving into the city, heading towards Hicot and Paris. I have concern for them. It's cold out there. I'm hoping that we have some kind of shelter, that we can give them hot coffee, you know, chocolate, you know, for a few hours a day, maybe the rec room. We can open it up to them to come in, to sit in that big, large building or area for a few hours and warm up before they go back out, you know? Maybe that's, you know, something that we can try to do for them at least. You know, we got that space that sits there all day long, you know? So maybe we can use it while we have this chill in our city. And you know, it comes and goes, but last night, yesterday especially, and this morning, and I'm quite sure tonight. And I know this is on the agenda, but I like to talk about it. It's number seven, and I don't want to be disrespectful to anyone, but it's about the airshow. Moreno Valley's gonna have it again. We're gonna host our airshow on April 7th, Saturday, and April 8th, Sunday. So for those that love to see our men and women fly throughout the sky and meet the men and women on the floor at the base, this is another opportunity for us to come together to thank them and for us to host our city. Once again, we're gonna host this airshow. So we want to be at our best, and please, keep this on your calendar because it's always been a good event. And we just want to know people...I'm sorry. We just want people to know that our city's open to them. Thank you.
Three seconds. Thank you. Okay. Good evening. How's it going, Frank?
All right.
Good evening.
I'll start to go.
Go ahead and start the timer one more time for him.
Ready?
Oh, go. Yeah.
Okay. Honorable Mayor, council members, and staff. Subject: Gun Control. The issue of gun control is not the prevalent problem. It is crime control and the restoration, restriction of the right to bear arms, which is directly against the Second Amendment. High officials who control the media are influenced by the masses to that it is dangerous to own firearms. The media has a lot of control, therefore causing rebellion of gun rights after such tragedies. Attorneys defending the Florida gunman of mental disorder is saying he is not responsible for his actions, irregardless of the loss of the 17 innocent lives. Having the jury feel sorry for him and not have the death penalty, that type of logic is the height of ignorance. For the fact that all those past gunmen knew exactly what they were doing. Over the past two years, the sheriff departments may have tried their best to stop these atrocities. They continue, continue on. Fortunately, a teacher in Florida was prepared and directed many students to safety. Bless her heart, she was real prepared. The profile of tragedies are at locations where masses groups, as at churches, nightclubs, conventions, and many schools, that are unarmed. They're very vulnerable. The appropriate action is of city mayors. A mayor in Texas, such as a mayor in Texas, had his school staff trained and armed to defend the students. It is a voluntary program, but well effective for the attackers, then knowing of the rightful defense in schools throughout the union, will always think twice. Disaster can happen anywhere, anyplace, anytime, as right here in our own backyard in San Bernardino. So it is best that I strongly encourage that we of Moreno Valley train our schools and college staffs to be well-prepared to expect the unexpected. It'll happen anytime, and we don't know. We have the officers, who most definitely will be more than obliged for the program training, led by Chief of Police David Kerlowitz, and as well in developing the prominent status of our city. We must act now to stop any bloodshed.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next three speakers is Daryl Tarrell, Kendrick Rivas, and Eric Hefner. And if the other speakers could please be ready. Okay?
Hi, my name is Daryl Tarrell. I know that DACA is a federal issue, but it's real to many in our community. DACA is about our young people who grew up in our community, kids who are selling in our schools, kids who are raised in our neighborhoods, who run in our playgrounds, who proudly march in our Fourth of July parades, who play soccer on Saturday, who sell Girl Scout cookies in front of our supermarkets, kids who go to the prom and get summer jobs, who have answered the call to defend our nation. It's that cadet in our OTC, at our, in our high schools, who wants nothing more than wear the uniform of the country that gave him or her a chance. These dreamers are Americans in their hearts, in their minds, in every single way but one, on paper. They were brought to this country by their parents, sometimes even as infants. They may not even know a country besides ours. They may not even know a language besides English. They often have no idea that they are undocumented until they apply for a job, or a driver's license, or college. We can have legitimate disagreements on how to fix our immigration system, but this is about who we are as a people. This is about talented and amazing young people who, for all intents and purposes, are Americans. They have raised, they have been raised as Americans, understand themselves to be part of this great country. They pledge allegiance to our flag. They live every day with the threat of deportation to a country they know nothing about. This is about whether we are a nation who kick hopeful, young strivers out of our country, or whether we treat them the way we would treat our own kids. It's about unity as one, as one people. Each time I look at that flag behind you, I'm reminded that our destiny is stitched together like those 50 stars in those 13 stripes. No matter who you are or where you come from, we are part of one big family here. It's called the Moreno Valley family. Despite the polarization of our politics, I believe that in a community like ours, where every race and every faith, any part of you can be found, that we are bound together by our common hopes and our common dreams. That's the dreams that the dreams of a dreamer are not so different than the dreams of our own kids, and that they deserve a chance to fulfill. That's why we gotta create a community with the American dream source for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Kendrick Rivas?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Good evening, staff, and good evening, fellow citizens. I would like to ask the council to please put the agenda back to 12 days before the agenda begins, and I would please ask the council to untable the decision to add more elective officials. And secondly, I would like to talk about my February 9th MetroLink trip to downtown Los Angeles. On February 9th, at 6:03 AM, I boarded the MetroLink at the Monovale train station across the 213. And around like, we arrived actually maybe 20 minutes before we were actually supposed to arrive at LA Union Station, so we were waiting on the track for one track to open. Then once I got off the train on track nine, it was my first time, actually, not my first time, but like almost in 10 years since I rode the MetroLink. And I'm also 10 years since I went to Union Station on like a fifth grade field trip over there. And then I took the silver line to where I was going, and then after I was done, I took, actually, I could have like actually taken the Expo line for free by using my MetroLink, but I didn't. I decided to like pay, and I got this like this nice tab card that actually cost $1, and then the one-day exclusive pass in the metro system cost $7. I'm like actually very proud of this for now. And then I took that Expo line all the way back to the 7th Street Metro corner, and then I went on the red line all the way to Hollywood and Sunset. Is it Hollywood Sunset? Maybe. And then I went back on the train at 5:30. It departed back at 5:30 at LA Union Station, and it actually arrived late at 7:30 PM. And, oh, the train, when it was arriving late, the train was going much faster than it was going in the early morning. And then finally, our police like, there's this dead bird that reported on January 26th doesn't been, hasn't been like situated with. I would like to know, when is that dead bird going to be dealt with? Because it's been already like disturbed and still like right there watching. Thank you.
Thank you, Kendrick. And Kendrick, if you could leave your information with one of our staff members, and then we'll try to find out information about the bird. Okay, thank you. Eric Hefner?
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of City Council. I'm Eric Hefner with Bridge Investment Group. We own the Reserva Ranch of Balago Apartments, as well as the closed Moreno Valley Ranch Golf Course, which is vacant right now. We've been going through the process of making our applications to the city to allow us to expand our apartments into the driving range of the golf course. In return for that, the golf course will be open. And what we're trying to do is, we're trying to, we want the golf course to be open this year, this coming fall. So we're fighting the calendar and the clock to get underway so it can be open in the fall. We've had some meetings with staff in the last couple of weeks, pretty contentious meetings, I'd say, but I'm here to commit to you as the City Council, and also to the community of Moreno Valley at large, that we're gonna do everything we can to bring to the reality the reopening of the golf course, along with our expansion of our apartments that we can. And I plead with the, with the staff that I'd like to be able to meet with you just as early as tomorrow, if it works with your schedule, so we can come back and we can work to a solution that works for all of us. Because this is too good of a project to let egos, politicos, innuendos, misinformation to get in the way. This is something that the City of Moreno Valley needs for their, for the kids, and it's really what the community would like to see, to have that golf course open for all the community members that live up there around the golf course. And anyway, I'm, I'm ready to meet at any time to continue this, so I want to just go public with that, to give us our commitment. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
The Florida tragedy, I'm sure, is on the hearts and minds of everyone still. And while I get the heart-wrenching emotional reaction to that, I think everybody had it first. I think we should reflect back now and start the process of looking at, yeah, how do we prevent things like that from happening? And I think one way to do that is really to look at things in reality. And the reality of the situation is we are creating a nation, we are creating a society that this violence is ever increasing. And I believe that is, from a lot of the standpoint, as we have taken away our ability to be a free people, to determine our own destiny, and to be given those tools to do that. I would like to see the discussion in our nations, in our states, in our cities, to turn around and see how we can bring back people's ability to do that, where they, where they saw a future, where evil was stamped out at the point of evil, and you had the ability to do that. And we should not restrict that ability to do that. Because if I, any of my loved ones, anyone here, anyone in this world, is put in or faced with that situation, I hope there's someone at that point that has the ability to defend the lives that are there. You can't depend on somebody to come five minutes later or a half an hour, because when they do, like they say, they're outlining the body bags, and none of us want to see So I hope, starting now, that people will look at the situation as it is, through the prism of reality, and we don't want to make the situation worse. We want to prevent it. We want to help the people that are looking to that situation or predetermined to get to that situation where they don't do that. That's where we should be focusing on. We should not, and we should not tolerate some of the situation out there where people are demagoguing it and trying to push a point of view that will make the situation worse. It's up to the, as they said, the silent majority to start speaking up, and speaking up for all of the people of the United States of America.
Thank you. Joanne Stephen and Luis Palomares.
Hi. I'm up here this time to thank all you guys that are up there that are really, really fighting for Moreno Valley to move forward and for us to have a better way of life, jobs, and to help all the residents that live in Moreno Valley. I have noticed that there's been a lot of positivity, and I really kind of like Eric Hefner, because he fights for a cause, and that's what we all should do. And I've been doing that for 34 years, is trying to push, you know, where I feel a passion for. And I think, you know, he's on the right track. He comes every week, and he tries to do his pitch for what he believes is, you know, be good for him and good for the city and good for the residents. And I've seen a lot of the golf courses just kind of dry up, and, you know, we don't have a lot of things for the residents to really do here. So I think if you keep, you know, things on the positive track, which I know you guys are really trying So I think if you keep, you know, things on the positive track, which I know you guys are really trying to do, I think that's really a good, uh, way to see things. As far as safety in our city, I have been concerned in the last few years of hearing about all the shootings that go on. Uh, sometimes it's like the Wild West, people just jump out of their cars and start shooting. I mean, it's really sad. As I get older, I don't go out at a certain time because I do feel like, you know, something could happen to me. Not as agile as I used to be. So I can imagine how, you know, I feel bad for the young kids because it is a scary situation out there. But I do applaud everyone that is on the council that is really fighting and taking all the criticism because there's an awful lot out there. I saw a lot of it on the web. And it's kinda hard not, for me, not to reply because I've been a fighter and I just wanna give it to them. And sometimes I have to hold restraints. Sometimes I just use the G I F. That's all I can do. But, um, I don't wanna bash anybody here for things that were said last week because I kinda had an incident that I could come up with that actually did happen. But I'm kinda gonna hold my restraint on that. So just do the good job, keep up the good fight. And if anybody gives you guys any kinda guff, well, so be it. Because that's what you're up there to do. You're doing your job. And I'm speaking to you, Victoria. I'm speaking to you, Eckstein, Ulysses, and even Marcus. We've had our differences and, but I always, you know, I talk to him straight to the face. I mean, I don't beat around the bush. He knows that. And, and even, even Jeff, you know, I'll tell him what's going on here. Says, I don't know, Joanne, they're up to something, but I'll figure it out because I'm, you know, logical person, but I don't know. But, you know, like I said, um, I'll be out there fighting for what I believe in and I always have.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Luis Palomares, community activist. Okay, I wanted to talk a little bit about, um, the last, uh, council meeting when Marcus said, um, something about he don't know what anybody's talking about attacking two women. I remember when we were out there at Stater Brothers, a couple of years ago when all the recall stuff was going on. He was out there harassing. I was blocking because he was signing a petition for recalls because he's always likes recalls, I guess. And anyway, um, I was blocking. He was bullying me. He was literally harassing me. Robert, my husband, had to come from out of the truck to say, don't talk to her. Don't talk to her. And then he left and later on in the evening, he was leaving because he was also there doing the petitions. We were blocking. And, uh, he just got livid because we were out there and he just didn't like it. Even the, even the manager of the store had to come out and tell him, you gotta leave. We're gonna call the police. And he said, oh, it's them. And he says, no, I got you on camera in the store. You're the aggressor. You're right here parked at an angle right in front of our store. The cars can't go one way or another. You need to leave. So there's another incident we're talking about. He don't got no self-control at all. Okay, on another note, as far as, uh, the shooting in Florida, wow. It's sad. Our kids can't even feel safe in their schools. I got plenty of grandkids still in high school and in the college. And it's really sad that we're living in this day and age, we have to be afraid for our kids and wondering if they're gonna come home. Something has to be done, but the lying Republicans, and I'll say it, they don't know, leave it alone. How many kids have to be killed? They, they can't man up, grow a spine, you know? I don't think they would like it if there was a big shootout at, in the Hall of Congress. Oh, wow, maybe they'd listen then. And we're not talking about taking people's guns away. Hey, everybody should have the right to have arms if they're, have a good clearance and they, um, don't have records and they don't have mental issues. It's only for that. Just tighten up. We don't need, uh, these weapons that do hundreds of rounds. We don't need that. In our schools, how sad it is. How many more kids have to die? That's a sad day in our country, as a country. Now, now the kids are marching. High school and college students are marching in Florida. You know, the, the students have made a difference. When we had Vietnam War, they were out there marching, college students, college students. They were out there marching. So we don't got the, you know, they put a stop to that. I mean, they, you know, they put an end to it because they marched. A kid's eighteen, they couldn't vote till they were eighteen. The students are the ones that turned it from twenty-one, they got to, you know, they, they had to be twenty-one, now they're eighteen. So they made a difference. And I guess it's gonna have to be the students again. Thank you.
Robert Harris? City Clerk, do we have any additional speakers for Nigel?
So Harris is the last one.
Okay. If there's any others, we'll just take them after the, the, the business. Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, uh, council and staff, um, I would just like to talk about the, uh, the, uh, weapon issue. And I would say that, uh, the United States is the only place in the world that has mass shootings, almost without exception. There's been a few here and there. But why is this a, an issue that only happens here? We have to look to ourselves to find out why. Uh, I'm all for the Second Amendment. Um, when the Second Amendment was written, um, we had muskets. It took a long time to get a weapon reloaded. And, uh, you know, with the AR-15, I mean, it just shoots. The only purpose for that weapon is to kill people, lots of people. It, it really has no, if you're, if you're a hunter and you have an AR-15, you're really cheating. I mean, it's not even fair to the animal. And I would say that even the, the police officers that are in this room would, would agree that, uh, they, they would like to see less AR-15s on the street. Because then again, there, there again, it's, the only purpose for those is for mass killings. And then, uh, the other thing I wanted to say is that, uh, you have to be twenty-one years old to buy a handgun. And yet you can buy an AR-15 when you're eighteen years old. And to me, that's, that's shocking. And I, I just think that we need to take the power away from the National Rifle Association. And people need to think, what is more important, supporting the National Rifle Association or keeping our kids alive? And thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you to the speakers. Would any council members like to make their reports and comments at this time? We are now going to, uh, move to our joint consent calendar, sections A through D on the agenda. All items listed on the consent calendar, sections A through D are considered to be routine, non-controversial and may be enacted by one motion unless a member of the City Council, Community Services District, City Successor Agency, Community Redevelopment Agency, Housing Authority, or the Board of Library Trustee requests that an item be removed for separate action. The motion to adopt the consent calendar is deemed to be a separate motion by each agency and shall be so recorded by the city clerk. Items withdrawn for report or discussion will be heard, uh, after, uh, public hearing items. And we have a request from Councilmember Gaiba? Yeah, it's on. It should, it should be on.
All right, I wanna, oh, now I can hear. That's right. Thank you. I'd like to pull A four for a separate vote.
Okay.
Uh, A seven for just a discussion item. Uh, A eight also just for a discussion item for the public's sake. A ten, um, there was a, a letter that was written in and I'd like to have some response to that letter that we got. And, uh, that, that'll be it from me. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Cabrera? Oh, oops, sorry. Go ahead.
Uh, A fourteen for discussion.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and pull A four for separate vote. We'll start with A seven. And that is, request for city sponsorship of Air March Air Force Reserve Base. Councilmember Gaiba?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment, uh, on this one. It, it's a good thing for us to do. Um, I, obviously I'm gonna be voting for it. But I just did wanna make a comment that we should be supporting March Air Reserve Base. And the amount of money that was put out there was, is commensurate with some of the other municipalities in the area that also supported for it. So, um, I'm, I'm very supportive every year. I go to the picnics. I flip the burgers. I'm involved with that. So, uh, and I've been involved in March Air Reserve Base for thirty years, having lived here for thirty-five. So, um, that's all I wanted to say is that I'm glad that we're, that the city is sponsoring and, and putting force some, um, into the, uh, into the fiscal impact. Thank you.
Okay, uh, A eight is the higher mobile amendment to the higher mobile grad program. Councilmember Gaiba?
I just would like the, uh, staff to just kinda go through it so that the public, uh, hears it firsthand, uh, the program.
Report of, uh, Financial Management Services for a brief report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protam, City Council members. Uh, with this item, the City Council had previously approved a higher, higher Moreno Valley grad program. Uh, part of this program allowed businesses that hired, uh, employees that worked six months at a minimum, uh, certain minute, certain number of hours and received additional, um, certification or education from different institutions would be eligible for a thousand dollars incentive from the city up to five thousand dollars per business. Through working with many of these businesses, we've received feedback that the required minimum hours was difficult because it made it a full-time individual, uh, which precluded a lot of the small businesses and precluded some professional designations as well. Uh, so by reducing these hours, we opened this up to really the benefit of the businesses uh, to meet the goals of, um, Moreno Valley businesses hiring Moreno Valley graduates and benefiting our community as a whole. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
And then the other one, I believe Jeff, you had A ten?
That's correct. I, I got an email from Susan Zites and it was pretty extensive about the HSIP. And I believe that's the proper one here and there, the funding. And, um, she went through quite an extensive discussion. I don't know, Marshall, if you got that same, uh, email. It came in about five eighteen. So I was hoping we could get a response to some of that right here. Now, the road signing and striping audit, um, uh, the, um, I, I guess when you get down to the bottom of what she's asking is, why are we spending money on a consultant rather than spending money on, uh, training somebody in the city who could do it on a regular basis? Uh, and I think that would make some sensible sense, um, that, uh, we should probably reconsider a consultant versus training so that we have somebody always on staff able to do these types of things. And I don't know if Eric has a response to that or, or Mr. Wolf.
Councilman, our Public Works Director, Michael Wolf, address that.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Gaiba, Mayor, members of the City Council. Um, I'll ask, um, Eric Lewis, our Transportation Engineering Division Manager, to respond to that.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, uh, Mayor Protam and members of City Council. The, the grant is specific for this one roadway segment. Um, what you mentioned is, um, something we, we desire to have maybe in the future as part of a, an overall, overall city goal to reduce collisions, um, on our entire network. But this, this project is specific to two roadway segments.
Thank you, Eric.
Okay, and then I believe the other one was A fourteen and that is acceptance of cycle three, active transportation program. Report of Public Works, uh, but Councilmember Cabrera?
So we're gonna have a report on this one as well?
Well, if you'd like a report or if you have a question.
Yeah, I know, um, I asked a couple of questions before, but, um, maybe if Parks or Public Works, whoever, if you can elaborate a little bit more, please.
Okay, it's, uh, Public Works, so if you could just provide a brief report.
Certainly, this is, um, acceptance of a grant award for a segment of an overall project, uh, which is the, the trail project. So this is a very specific segment that's identified, um, as in the staff report. It's a two and a half mile, I'm sorry, two-mile segment of the Juan Batista De Anza Multi-Use Trail from El Portoro Park to Lake Paris. So this will be the design, the, the engineering side of the house, the environmental, and then the follow-on construction. So this will be that small portion that connects, um, some existing features that go to the south. So, uh, as indicated on the attachment, there's some existing features that we want to connect to. So this will be acceptance of the, of that, um, grant and then we'll move forward with the project.
Do you have any estimated time as to when, uh, for example, the construction might begin for that section?
Certainly. So right now, we're gonna be receiving the, the grant and then we'll have to go through the Caltrans process. This is a federal project, so it requires us to go through that process. So we're looking at authorization to start the design later this, this year in May. And then we believe that the design will take about six to eight months. So January of next year, we'll complete the design of that two-mile segment. And then we, we have to go back to Caltrans and get authorization to go to the next step. So we believe that will be April of twenty nineteen and then completion of construction in June twenty twenty.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, thank you. Michael, we have, uh, Gaiba, Councilmember Gaiba?
Thank you very much. As you're discussing that, I just wanted to point out, I think, um, Eric probably has the history on this. We've gone all the way back from when I was in the planning commissioner, working on this trail. But Sam, am I correct on that? May, may I ask you that question? Uh, you probably have that history. This has been an ongoing project for quite some time. It's, it's not like it's just all of a sudden appeared in this grant.
Uh, that is correct. We're, we're trying to get a, a regionally significant trail through the entire reach of the city. It's, uh, multiple phased and we've been very successful between the active transportation program, cycle two, as well as cycle three. And then we've also applied for a recent grant with the help of, uh, the consultant that was, um, on item A eight, uh, to fund the rest of it if we're successful. So we're aggressively pursuing it. It is part of our strategic plan initiative to complete the trail.
When I was on the planning commission, how long ago was that? Like two thousand eleven or twelve or something when you first started working on this one?
Well, we had it as part of our Bicycle Master Plan.
Yep, the Bicycle Master Plan.
Right, and then we, we renamed it to, to get historical significance and to attract the federal dollars, which, uh, we're obviously successful at.
I, I, thank you, Eric. I just wanted the little bit of the history so that everybody kinda understood. This has been ongoing for a while and you've been working very diligently on it and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Madam Clerk, any public comments on the items other than A four?
Yes, sir. Rafael Burgueras, David Zites, and Roy Blackard.
And just so you know, item A four is the mayoral appointments. So if there's any of the other ones, that's what's rough.
Roy wants to speak on A four.
Okay, so we're gonna have that as a separate vote. Okay?
Mayor, I got a question. So in other words, if I wanna talk about other items on the, on the consent, consent, the consent calendar, but I also wanted to talk about four, am I gonna miss an opportunity to talk about four or do I could come back again?
Yeah, so you could talk about all the items on here except four.
Okay, good enough.
Yeah, and then because four, you're gonna talk about it later.
Okay, good. I got it clear. Thank you so much. Thank you again.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, residents, and our guests. Um, the consent calendar has been one of my favorite subjects that the staff puts out. And I thank Pat for putting it out. That's nice to read and to understand. And, um, I wanna talk about A five because I put down A five and I wanna welcome the new hirees again. We have a couple of more hirees, Maria and Reggie. Welcome to Moreno Valley. We welcome you. Hopefully you have a great career with us. Um, my second one is, um, the P E G. Those are others that we pay for on our spectrum bill. This is something that we all complain about when we get a large bill and we pay this little portion. And this little portion now goes to our media, Channel Three, for improvements. That's where that money goes, residents of Moreno Valley. So when you see that nickel or that ten cents or that fifteen cents, that money adds up to two hundred thousand dollars and it goes to our media right here for our pleasure. So you can see what we're doing in this chamber for a fact. This is where that money goes. So that's a good thing. Now you know where that money goes. That's A six. Okay, A eight. I'm hoping that tonight that gets approved, that we don't put a burden on employers that only need part-time helpers, that we don't require them to have thirty-five hours or forty hours, that we do twenty hours. Because part-timers go to school and they do other things. They study. So that's something that, um, that A eight is hoping to get passed tonight. I read it, the- study. So that's something that that A8 is hoping to get passed tonight. I read it. So that's a good thing. And I leave my comment for A4 later, and and I'm glad that we mentioned A7 once again. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rafael. Next speaker is David Zeitz.
Good evening. I'm here to just ask a couple of questions about A20. I do believe it is a good program. It needs to be done, has been needed to be done for years. I do live on Ironwood Avenue, so Ironwood's I can speak about. I don't know about Kitching. That would be whoever lives there, we could probably give you better on that. But my one question is, we are paying $101,000 for a consultant. I heard what the gentleman said, I can't remember his name, about Mr. Geiba's question is, why do we not take some of that money and train an employee to do this citywide, and then we could have traffic safety citywide instead of spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on just two streets? I understand it's too late for this point, but I think we should consider this in the future, that let's train our employees, the people that we have working for us. One, it'll better their life, because if they are better trained, they can have a better wage, and so on. And that's seems to be what we're here for, is to give people better jobs. So if we keep it in-house, all the better. Also, on a on the same thing, I believe there was some mention of a possible, oh, where did I have it written down? I'm sorry, that a public outreach prob portion of this would be be able to get what people in the area have seen. You know, I've lived on that road close to 36 years. I've seen the changes, and I've seen what needs to be done. I've seen the accidents. I've been woken up in the middle of the night with rollover cars in the street, finding young men that are no longer with us. So I think part of this program should include some of the people that live in the area to get their input of what they need. Statistics are great, but somebody that's actually seen what's going on and knows what's going on would be a good thing. And at this point, I would like to put my name forward, that if this is a possibility with this, I will volunteer to do that. Okay? Other things that I would have liked to have volunteered for also, but apparently I did not hear or know of the notifications when we could turn in the applications for different council, not council positions, but committee positions. So but on that note, I think it's a good plan. It's stuff that needs to be done. But I think in the future, we should spend a little money on training our people to do this, and let's keep it in-house. Thank you.
Thank you, David, for the comments. Thank you. We have Joanne Stephens.
As far as the sponsorship on A7, I'm for that, too, because I think we should support March Air Force Reserve Base, because bottom line is, is if it wasn't for them, I don't even believe we would be a city, you know? They were here long before we were here. And they deserve our support. And as far as the higher mobile, I'm all for that, because I got like 12 grandchildren to be graduating, and I think it's a great thing. And they're all going to college. I don't care if I gotta kick them in the butt, but they will be going. And so I think that's a great thing for the mobile graduates, just like higher mobile is. I believe in that program, too. And and like Rafael says, people need to know. They need to get informed, and I'm so glad that he really is on top of all that, because that money goes to support this program here. And everybody that doesn't come to the council meetings, and you can see there's a lot of residents that do not come to the council meeting, and they see it from home. I know that I do, and there were times that I wasn't able to come, and I would see it. And I'm very happy for that, and I even see the reruns and and you get really informed, because there's so much misinformation out there. People are just so confused. It's just, it's really sad. They they don't really see what's going on here in the city. They don't know what's happening, and they're just taking second-hand information, and it's it's just a mess out there. And then on number 10, that is that is a good idea to get somebody to maybe be trained, and that way we don't have to spend so much money on just maybe having somebody come out and do just a segment, and you know, that's $100,000. That's an awful lot of money. But that's something in the future, and that can be put on the table. But as for everything else, I think, you know, everything's moving in the right direction, like I said. So I hope we get a lot of yeses and not a whole lot of no's like we have in the past. Okay.
Thank you. Luis Palomares?
Luis Palomares, community activist. Wow, this is great. This is what the mayor's doing in our city. You know, A7, A10, higher mobile? That's great. We've got to keep on doing that. He's got all kinds of good programs going on. Also about our air, I mean, our March Air Force Base, always, always support our veterans. I remember two times they had an event here at the Rec Hall, two Februaries in a row, and that was great. We support them every every inch of the way, because they're out there. And as we talk right now, they're dying in foreign land. So I'm all about the veterans, because I got grandsons and I got grandkids that have been in the military and and all of our, all of our people. In the 60s, you know, wow, that was something. Vietnam. I salute every veteran that went there. And a lot of them, a lot of them, we let fall at the wayside. So this is good. Anything that has to do with a veteran, I'm all for it. Thank you, Mayor, for bringing these things to us. Thank you for the support in mobile. And keep it up, and all the programs you're doing, and all the homeless, all of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, any more speakers?
No more speakers.
Okay, make a motion to approve the items excluding A4 for separate action.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Cabrera, second by Councilmember Geiba. Okay, it's approved 5-0. Moves us on to separate action, which is A4, mayoral appointments. And I'll have city clerk, if you'd like to give a brief report.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, this item is brought to you for ratification of the appointments to the Emergent Leaders Council, Parks Community Services and Trails Committee, and the Planning Commission. Mayor has provided the names of the candidates that he has interviewed and is making these appointments and would like the council to ratify his slate. This completes my report. I'm here to take any questions. Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Any public comments on this one?
Yes. Rafael Burguerras.
If you can name the others as well, that we could just, they can be ready.
Roy Blackert and Luis Palomares.
Good evening, once again, Mayor, Councilmembers, staff, residents, and guests. A4 is very important to the city of Moreno Valley. When people get appointed to these positions, whether it's commissioners, committees, or boards, these are residents. These are residents that live in this city that will make a that want to make a difference to their families and to their neighbors, who they don't know, because no one knows everybody in this city. But one thing they have in common is to make our lives better, to make sure that this city is functioning the way it should be. When someone volunteers for a position, it doesn't always come with the highest education, degree, experience. But the one thing that the one thing that the resident needs to have is common sense, to listen well in what the staff is proposing. Because most of the time, when you're in a committee, the staff is always proposing something to be done. Their job is to listen carefully. There's a balance in government, especially at the city level. There's a balance. You cannot have all lawyers up there. You cannot, because they all work against each other or work with each other. It would not be fair to the people. This is why, like the like the last speaker said, he missed an opportunity to apply. You know what? If you sign up and go to the website, it'll tell you of all the applications that are available, and there's quite a few of them, residents of Moreno Valley. There's quite a few positions that are available for anyone that wants to volunteer summer of their hours into the city. You have an opportunity to make this city grow. This is not all about who's the best or who has the highest degree. There's a balance in everything. So if you don't have a balance, nothing works together. This is why I fight, so there can be a balance in the city of Moreno Valley. I may not be the best at a lot of things, but I sure have common sense, and I know between good and bad. I know that for a fact, because I've been taught. And I will apply that. And if I did something wrong, I will do the time, because I did something wrong. But I know that we have to have a balance in this city, and that can't all things be one way.
Thank you, Rafael, for your great words. Thank you.
Well, for refresh your memory a little bit, I stepped up here about a year ago and said, in Roy's world, he'd get rid of all the boards and commissions. We've we've had a lack of participation in the city for a long time. It's reflected in the boards and commissions, all the vacancies. And at best, they need to be reformed, consolidated, and made to work for our community as the way it is now, not the way it was. There might have been a time when there was lots of people that would that would volunteer, spend the time to that. For whatever reason, that's not the case. My second alternative was to if, as for the Planning Commission, was if you didn't want seven members in there, cut it down to five. If or appoint two people. Let's get it done. Let's get it over with. Because another refresh of everyone's memory, about four years ago, we had Measure R, and that changed up a little bit of the the parameters of how we did this. But that beloved mayor at the time stepped me up in front of the up in front of the dais there and had me explain what was what my theory was on that, and why I advocated eventually for becoming a general law city with a directly elected mayor, with a two-year term. Because it gives everybody one vote in the city every two years. And every two years, you have the ability to change the majority on that dais. And that's where we should be fighting the political fights. When we're doing the business of the community, we should be doing that and getting done with it. If you don't like what they're doing, work in our elective process by our constitution and advocate for your candidates. But don't disrupt the system. Don't just destabilize the city with all the yanks and things that go on. All the things that are going on and all the people that I see and read and hear, but where are they? Where are they today making the case or making a difference? I stepped up to the planning, I stepped up to the council a couple of months ago and reiterated that. I asked the Planning Commission, because there was five members there or four members with almost a quorum, and I said, would you tell, would you suggest to the council either cut it down to five or appoint two people? I don't know if they if they reiterated that to you, but today is the day you need to make the decision and move on. We don't need to fight about it. We you need to put, if you're going to put two people on, put them on. If you can't agree, then consolidate the commission down to five, so you can have three people as a quorum, and we won't have like the last meeting where they could not hear projects because there was not a quorum on the Planning Commission. That cannot stand.
Thank you. Thank you, Roy. Next speaker is Luis.
Luis Palomares, I remember one time way back, Geiba wanted to do away with all the commissions. He might do some damage control after on his closing comments. But that's what I remember. I think there's film on that one. Anyway, as far as we got the super lie way, all the liars club, Eastanders, bashers, terrorists, et cetera, et cetera. And I could say it, Zeitz, because this is my three minutes and my freedom of speech. And anyway, they're all they're all lying on their on their internet and all that, whatever they do. They're cowards. They can't be here saying what they got to say, you know? And who would want them on a cons on any of these? I know I wouldn't, when they don't even support the vision of the community, the the mayor here. You know, they bash him, they talk about him, they lie about him. Who would want those deadbeats, miserable people on anything? Wow, I wouldn't want them. God, I mean, they really got their nerve. And right now, they're lying again. They're lying. And they'll be lying after this meeting. They'll be on their little, you know, it's like the Klan, you know? They put their hoods on. It's a shame. Okay, saying all that now, as far as, wow, I lost my train of thinking now. But, you know, put who you need to put in there. I know Lo, at the last, at the last Planning Commission, he was talking about, we gotta put, we gotta get a committee going so we can get some members and more Planning Commission members in here, da-da-da-da-yada. He's bashing the mayor after you appointed him. What a hypocrite, what a backstabber. Man, I mean, the gall of these people, you know, the gall of these people, I just don't get it, you know? Or maybe it's just me. Wow. I could see, I could see right through a rat, a liar, and a backstabber. You know, it's a shame in our city. You know, he's supposed to work with the mayor, the vision of the community, what what we voted for and everything else. And no, he wants to, well, hey, okay, you're gonna fill the seats, you know? And now it's gonna be with who and what and how? They'll cry about that, too. I mean, it's it's a shame. And if they cannot do their job, five of them? Oh, wow. They can't do their job. But I remember before, they didn't have two alternates. They were always here, one Thursday, always here. But now, when the alternates came in, oh, they're missing here, missing there, missing here and there. I got all the film. You know, so if they can't man up and do their job, five of them, wow, maybe it's time to, you know, not not a not apply again next time, Robert Lo. I mean, I thought you were a smart guy, but I don't think so. You're just a backstabbing hypocrite liar.
Okay, we will have any, Madam Clerk, anymore? No? Okay, I'll close the public comments. Counsel deliberation? Okay, we have Councilmember Geiba?
Thank you. First of all, let me remind the public that this is a slate. In other words, it's all or nothing. If these were separate or individuals, maybe we could have some discussion on those topics. But where you're not giving the full counsel and opportunity to have that discussion, we have to make a decision on the slate. Second of all, when I was on the Planning Commission, I was appointed to Planning Commission by two entirely separate councils, of which I do believe Ms. Baca was on one of those councils. But what we used to do is all five council members would meet with every one of them like an interview process. We would have the chance to discuss it with them, get to find out what they think, how they believe. Are they qualified? And I disagree with the speaker. When you're trying to take care of a city and complete your fiduciary responsibilities, you want the highest and best qualified person for that job. A good heart is wonderful, but if you can't, if you don't know the information properly, and you haven't learned it, and you haven't done already what you're supposed to do to knew it, then take your time, go back and learn. Before I became a Planning Commissioner, I was on the Environmental Ecological Preservation Committee, and we used to screen all the environmental EIR, environmental impact reports, before they went to the Planning Commission. That's where I began to get my knowledge and be able to read those things, as well as my background. So I very much disagree with the speaker. We need to find the best qualified people to sit on our boards and commissions. And to do that, we have to have the opportunity of all five council members to actually interview these people like we used to do. And to do that, we have to have the opportunity of all five council members to actually interview these people like we used to do. Now, the same complaint I've had before, we have rules. We have regulations, we have policies, we have procedures. We've always had those, and if we don't have them, then why bother anyway? Once again, there's about several of these applications that are incomplete. And I'll read it to you one more time as I do every time. Attendance of at least one meeting is required prior to the appointment dates of the meetings attended. There's at least four or five of these that don't have those. Whether I like them or not is irrelevant. It's an incomplete application. And if any one of my staff had been applying for a job and didn't have a complete application, the chances are, they would not be sitting there today as the highest and best qualified people to work for this city. And that's what you're asking them to do. These are volunteers asking to work for our city. Therefore, they should be the best possible. I did have a chance to review all the applications, and after reviewing the applications, and I'm not gonna pick out anybody, because it's a slate. Most of these people aren't even qualified to be on any of these boards and commissions properly. Either academically, educationally, or experientially. I won't pick out any or tell you who they are. But even if one of them wasn't good enough, I can't vote for that, because it's all a slate. So I won't be voting for this. We should be doing this very much differently like we used to do it over two years ago. When we used to have the interviews and the interview process, and we all got a chance to ask them questions and understand them in the public's eye. And we're not doing that anymore, which makes me wonder, what are we doing? Thank you.
Okay, council member Marquez.
You know how I found out about the slate? A resident called me and says, do you see who the nominees are? A resident called me. I didn't get it from our staff or my colleagues. I got this information from a resident. Pretty bad. Because when I had my briefing, it was never brought up. Never brought up. Why it wasn't brought up, I have no idea, and I'm not gonna ask. When I saw these names, I, I just, I had no words to explain it. Half of these people on the slate are recalling me. They're ahead of a recall movement to recall me. I'm sitting up here, um, Mayor, can you have us be quiet down there?
Okay, whoever's talking, okay, if you could let him speak, please.
Have a little respect, please. But these names in here are people who wanna be on a commission, a board. But they don't think I'm doing my job because of lies. And we're gonna appoint them, I think that's a slap in my face. I got over 4,000 votes when I ran, and I was clean sweep when I ran. People believed in me. But now I have a handful of people say, well, you're not good enough for the job. But it's good enough for them to be on a commission or a board, and you want me to approve of this. This is a joke. What I'm gonna say is this, I don't agree with this. But, you know, it's voted as a slate. It should be individually. But as a slate, you go, vote for all of it or none of it. And we know where it's going this evening. Thank you.
Council member Baca, did you have a?
Yes, I wanted to make some comments. First of all, you hear about experience. Well, none of us had any experience before we were elected to the city council. And people that are appointed to the planning commission or any of these commissions, you have the emergent leaders council, the parks, community services, and trails committee. You cannot get experience until you're appointed for the first time. So I, I encourage everyone that's out there listening, people that have friends, your young children, well, adult children, of course, to apply for these commissions. I mean, we've had openings for a long time. So experience is gained by stepping forward. That, that's number one. Number two is that, that the opportunity is there for everybody. Anyone that wants to apply, we've had these openings for a very long time. And we had over, I, I believe the assertive clerk said, over 21 vacancies for a very long time. So step up. And last, I wanna call out the, or point out that on the planning commission's agenda for this Thursday, where they're asking for an ad hoc committee to discuss the, the vacancy. So I know that they're, they're urgently asking us to appoint people to the planning commission. So either way, not everyone is gonna be happy, because there's limited amount of, of spaces. And the mayor is choosing a slate. And our job as council members is to ratify. His job is to work on that. And he's taking his time. I know that people are urging him to appoint, to appoint. And now that we're appointing, not everyone's happy. So, you know, we can't have it both ways. Someone is gonna be upset because they weren't appointed. And someone else is gonna be elated, because they are given the opportunity to serve on the commissions. So that's what I wanted to say, that, you know, doesn't matter how it goes, someone's not gonna be happy.
I would just say the same thing, I think, you know, however it goes, you know, I think people are just not gonna be happy about it. But I wanna remind, you know, residents as well, because there's been some things said, things, you know, on the web and, and different people saying different things, and they're just untrue. But, you know, I followed a comprehensive process. Obviously, there was applications, the applications were filed, screening of the applications, interview, everyone had an interview to this advisory board. And so I'll say that again, you know, it's an advisory board to the council. So all of the actions are always appealable to the city council, so it's an advisory board. I interviewed everyone and selected, not only the most qualified, in my opinion, but those who I really believe have a heart for our city and share my vision for the city, including our strategic plan, momentum, mobile, jobs. All of my selections meet the qualifications to serve. And, you know, the only qualifications to serve on any advisory board is just like to serve on the council. And that's to be at least 18 years old, 18 years of age, and be a resident in Moreno Valley. These applicants or my selections or appointments, the majority of them have, except the ELC member, because the person's young, have over 30 years of living here in the city of Moreno Valley. So if an 18-year-old, one of my college students at Moreno Valley College, or let's say a retired person, you know, whoever, you know, that doesn't have that subject matter experience, you know, can serve on the council or can serve on a border commission, then why can't these people serve? I also just wanted to reiterate that I think some people have forgotten that, and I think Rafael, where's Rafael? Are you there? Okay, there you are. I think you said it really clearly and very well and very articulate. In that whoever serves on the border commissions, like the council, it's really to, to advocate for the public, to be an advocate for the public's interests. And so you're not supposed to be lawyers, engineers, or those kinds of things. So again, you know, I look for, you know, someone that has a good heart, someone that shares that vision of progress for the city and, and moving forward. And, you know, I believe that these individuals, you know, have that. They've been residents for many, many years. And I just wanna say, you know, respectfully, you know, I agree with Mayor Potembaka. You know, I understand, you know, that in the past, you know, the council, you know, was able to interview, you know, and I get that. And I, that's why in previous meetings before, I've mentioned, you know, if you have someone, you know, bring them forward, you know, nominate them. And, you know, obviously, I'll consider that person. But you know what? In the whole year, I did not receive one nomination. Not one nomination from the council. You know, not, you know, no recommendations, you know, hey, Mayor, you know, I think this person, you know, should be a great fit for my district. You know, nothing. So there, there have been vacancies. And just to reiterate what Mayor Potembaka mentioned, there are vacancies. And it's not that they're not being necessarily filled, number one. Sometimes we don't have enough applicants. For example, the environmental preservation board, I believe there was only one applicant, you know, and that was just recently. You know, we're waiting to get more people, you know, to, to apply to that board so we can conduct interviews there. Multiple boards, you know, don't have that. So, you know, maybe what Roy was mentioning, you know, is later on, we need to, you know, consider or talk about, have that discussion, you know? Maybe we need to revamp things or maybe market it better. I know we've been trying to market, but, you know, somehow, you know, people are just not applying. We've also talked about incentivizing, putting stipends, you know, those kinds of things, and still, you know, we have a, a lack of interest. So, but if you are interested, you know, feel free, you know, apply, there's a lot of vacancies out there. And I will always interview every person, every applicant that submits their application. Also, you have to understand, we have background checks as well that we conduct. So there have been cases where, you know, we have made those appointments before, and then they didn't pass their background checks. Now, that's confidential information, you know, as far as, you know, the particulars, you know, I can't talk about, you know, what was it that they did and those kinds of things, it just wouldn't be fair to them. But because of that, we had to back off of those, some of those appointments. So I'll just leave it at that.
Remember, Cabrera?
And in addition to everything that's already been said, I mean, not, not only tonight, the individuals who came to speak, some of which are on this slate that's presented in previous council meetings, you know? These individuals, Rafael, most of you come consistently to the council meetings and give your input and talk about the agenda. And, and you, you give your point of view, your perspective, and what you see. And it's not always the same as the councils. So that's, that's something that we need on these boards to fill these vacancies. So that's, that's really all that I have to say. And, you know, we, we need more of that input. We need different kinds of perspectives that also go hand in hand with the direction that we're trying to move the city into. So that's all I have to say.
Go ahead and close deliberation, entertain a motion by council.
So moved.
Motion by Mayor Potembaka, second by Cabrera. Please vote. Okay, and it's approved 3-2. Congratulations to the new appointments to the ELC, Parks, Trails, and Recreation and Planning. And if you're here in the, in the audience, the city clerk will be reaching out to you tomorrow to follow the process. Okay, thank you. If you're one of the appointees, if you could please stand to be recognized. Okay, let's give him a round of applause. Thank you, thank you. All right, we're gonna go to, we're gonna take a five-minute break, and then we will come back for the general business. Good evening and welcome back to the Moreno Valley City Council meeting. We're on to general business, which is the fiscal year 2017, 2018 mid-year budget review and approval of the revised operating budgets for fiscal year 2017, 2018, and fiscal year 2018 and 2019. We will have Marshall Ironman, our chief financial officer, give a report.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, city council members. The report this evening provides the mid-year budget report, which updates the mayor and city council regarding current financial trends and provides the fiscal year 1718 mid-year budget review through December 31st, 2017. This report also requests the approval of recommended amendments to the fiscal year 1718 and 1819 revenues and expenditures. From a high level, when we look at the general fund revenues, although 50% of the year has expired, revenues don't tend to follow a straight-line analysis. Based on historical trends, we would expect to receive about 33% of the revenues as budgeted. At this point in time, or as of December 31st, we would, had received about 32% of those revenues. So this falls right in line with what we would expect with the budget, so the revenues are following the trends as appropriate. With regards to the general fund expenditures, again, it follows that straight-line pattern. Now, with expenditures, we would assume through six months that we've expended about 50% of the expenditures to date. At this point in time, through December 31st, the general fund expenditures were at 48%. So again, this is in line with the expectations for the general fund. So from the high level, excuse me, the general fund is following right in the trends along with the adopted general fund budget. As we look at some of the proposed budget adjustments for, excuse me, the item, one of the things we always look at is the city council's direction to maintain a balanced general fund budget, which serves as the foundation for the fiscal status of all city operations. Ongoing funding is directed to sustain ongoing operational expenses. One-time funding is directed towards one-time expenditures. And with this, the general fund continues to be structurally balanced without the use of fund balance for those ongoing operations. Now, based on the economic activity and revenues collected through December 17th, we do have some requests for revenue adjustments. With this, we're looking at approximately $853,000 increase in general fund revenues. A lot of this is tied to what we're seeing in development activity with building permits and administrative fees. And with the expenditures for the general fund, we're looking for an increase of approximately $477,000 cumulative. This is primarily due to one item related to the March airshow that was in the 1819 budget that we're moving to 1718. That'll fund some of the public safety for that event. Along with some additional personnel and internal service fund charges that we're moving from the gas tax over to the general fund, which will help us fund some of the street improvements that we're looking for. Now, outside of the general fund, some of the key things that we're looking at, with regards to capital projects and grants, you will recall in the first quarter adjustments, we did a carryover of some of the expenditures. What we're looking at on the budget, some of the revenues that we had previously budgeted had not been received, so we wanna carry over some of those revenue budget line items for grants. And then with regards to our tax allocation bonds, in May of 2017, the city council authorized the refunding of our tax allocation bonds in slightly more than $40 million that was outstanding at the time. What you will see in these budget adjustments are the cleanup to show the closeout of the prior bonds and those monies coming in and recognizing the liabilities going forward. So you'll have a couple transactions there that do put a big number, but it's really just to show the refunding of those bonds. And the last item that we're looking at is with regards to the Moreno Valley utility. As we do see demand growing through new development, we do see revenues and expenditures growing with Moreno Valley utility as well. And with that, that concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Marshall. Really appreciate it. And we have council member Gaiba for questions.
Yeah, Marshall, with the increased revenue from the Moreno Valley utility, are we gonna be close to paying that bond off for that, for the Kitchen Street? Or can we do it? Have we discussed doing it? It's only 10 million, and we're bringing in 6 and 12 million dollars with Moreno Valley utility now, if I'm correct, from my memory.
Yeah, with the Moreno Valley utility, what we're going through right now is kind of a, kind of an organizational analysis. We're reviewing the staffing, we're reviewing the current contract with ENCO. And part of that is also examining our rates and debt services outstanding. And, and what we need to look at with future projects down the road as well. So we're kinda taking that all into a comprehensive approach, and we'll be looking at everything as we come back to council with further discussions.
Again, we have part of that as a, a strategy for paying that bond off a lot sooner than for out, the full just length of the bond. I think five years seem practical. I even, one of the utility commissioners actually gave an example of what he thought could be done too, from the utility commission's point of view.
And we'll continue to look at those as, as part of the analysis.
I'd be asking that, we might take a look at that.
Thank you. Any public comments? Madam clerk?
Yes, we do. We have Rafael Burgueras, Roy Blackert.
And I just wanted to say for the public as well, there is, I believe it's page, because I believe we received an email, page four, the first paragraph that talks about that additional, I guess you could say, revenue that we received in that one year with the carryover. So, okay, all right, Rafael?
Good evening, Mayor, once again, council members, staff, residents, and our guests. I wanna thank Marshall for bringing out this report, because I have an, I had an opportunity to I want to thank Marshall for bringing out this, um, report, because I have an, I had an opportunity to look at it. And, 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 uh, I was glad to see the breakdown. See, what, what I want everybody to understand in the city of Marina Valley, there is transparency in this city, okay? There's a lot of transparency. There's a lot of people that say that the mayor is not doing his job. No, he is doing his job. And Baca said it well, not everybody's gonna like it. And we already know that. Because he's saying that people wrote about him on Facebook and social media, terrible things. To try to fool you residents, to try to tell you in a different way that we're not doing our job here. No, the mayor is doing his job with the staff. Like I mentioned earlier, in these boards and commissions, just like the council, they have to listen to the staff before they approve things. Common sense tells me that the staff is not going to lie to us, the taxpayers of this city. They're not gonna forge documents. They're not gonna put their reputation and their family on the line for a couple of dollars. They're not gonna do that. They're gonna be very honest, and honesty can hurt too. I enjoy reading it, because they broke down the hundreds of millions of dollars that we spend in this city yearly. Every year, this is why we fight for jobs and development, so we can offset those prices. So we can have our roles and things to be done. It takes money, people. It takes a lot of money. Some of us only can give so much, and there's others that give a little bit more. Look at what the, look at what the staff does for us. Sign up. Go to the website and sign up, so you're able to read it. We don't have 12 days. We have five days. Things can be done in five days. Yes, I am retired, so I have the benefit of looking at it a little bit more than others. This is why I come up here every time, to challenge the staff, to make sure that they stay honest with the public. And then you earn their respect, because they're doing their job. Transparency, transparency is the most important thing in this city. You know why? Because we're the third in this nation. Think about it, people. There's 50 states in this country. 350 million people, and we're the third in the entire nation that have our finances in the black.
Thank you, Rafael.
As I read the mid-year adjustments, I see that we drove right by the 750 to 1.7 million dollar potential increase we have in the sheriff's contract. And I will remind you that that is probably becoming, because if you don't read, you read in, in, in the papers, and you didn't even listen to it on a radio station, are the reason why. That's because of a big increase in public employee salaries and pensions. And that's what's driving a lot of the costs in the state, cities, and everything. It's something that you should really be paying attention to, because there's one person on the, that I see on the dais that was there in 2013. And we had, as it was revealed to me by our then beloved mayor at the time, there was a big push by the, the city manager and the chief financial officer to increase the sales tax 1% to solve a very bad budget hole we had back in the recession times of 2014. And he said, and he told me the reason he did not do that and did not change that and cut spending, he said, because I kept coming up here and saying, "Don't do it, not no, but hell no." And he said, "They could not refute what you said." And I believe some of the outlook if you see today is that, because we, the, the council decided to cut spending, and it got the budget working without raising taxes, and you're reaping the benefit of it now. Just like Mr. Geiba pointed out about the bond, the staff was pushing a $25 million bond hard. We got it down to a 10. The utility is looking better. Revenues are coming in. As Mr. Geiba pointed out, you might be able to pay it off even earlier on the 10 million to have more money to do the projects. It's how you look at things. It's the difference between understanding and genuine understanding. Between planning and strategic planning, and knowing how to put the pieces together. And when people work together and put their collective heads together and work to a common goal for the benefit of everybody, it's amazing what you can accomplish. But far too often, all across the board, I see it's either my way or the highway, or we hold grudges, or we don't want to cooperate. Let's tell it like it is, put it all out on the table, and let everybody decide. Let's come up with the best solutions. Like I said, stop the hate, stop the bickering, stop the BS that's been going on for far too long, for decades in this community. Let's turn it around. Let's work for the best. Let's put the best solutions. If you want to put a solution, get in the ballgame. Put your suggestions out there. Sit on the boards or, or make your suggestions here where they can hear it, because that's how you'll change the policy.
Thank you, Roy. Really appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, we have, Madam Clerk, any more speakers?
No more speakers.
Okay. Just always checking with you, just in case. Uh, all right, council deliberation. Okay, seeing that no one's pressed their button, entertain a motion to approve, well, really quick, uh, city attorney, I have a question on this one. Can we approve all items here, um, as one motion, or do they need to be separate motions? Because this looks different from before.
Single motion moving all of the resolutions is appropriate.
Okay, okay. That's how we did it before, I believe. So I entertain a motion to approve staff recommendations for, um, to adopt basically the resolution, and also for the CSD, the Housing Authority, and the Successor Agency.
So moved.
Okay, moved by, um, um, Councilmember Marquez, and, uh, second by Councilmember Cabrera. Approved five-zero. I think that was the easiest, uh, mid-year budget we've ever done, in like the five years I've been here. All right, um, we'll go to, uh, reports. We have first, uh, Mayor Pro Tembaka, March Joint Powers Commission.
Okay. The recent Joint Powers Commission meeting was held on February the 14th, and, uh, we approved the 2018 Legislative Action Agenda and authorized travel to Washington DC with legis, uh, to meet with legislator and funding agency executives. We also heard of review of the current air insulation compatibility use zone study and learned that the new AQs would be released tomorrow. And after confirming that the project had Air Force support, we approved the Freeway Business Center project, which is 709,000 square feet for the parcel between the I-215 and the O-215 south of Alessandro. And that concludes that report.
Okay, uh, the next one we have is Riverside County Habitat, Habitat Conservation Agency, Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor. How many people out there know what the kangaroo rat looks like? This little critter is causing a lot of problems, even federal level. I mean, this, this, people don't, don't know it. He's a little animal that long, that big, and he's got a tail about that long. And he's been around for ages. The kangaroo rat fee transfer for Marina Valley through December 31st, 2017 is $89,013 and nearly 14% of the total collected by the RCHCA. Since the inception of this kangaroo rat collection fees, Marina Valley has contributed over $3,205,386, which is 6% of the total fees of, of this animal, rat. They want to change the name, not to a rat, but something else, but nobody's come up with it. So, um, the, this little rat, or this little animal, is, uh, is not only here, it's in San Diego also. So, he's kind of, kind of made his move going south. I don't know, maybe he'll keep going down to Mexico, who knows? Or maybe he'll get on a boat and go to Hawaii or some, who knows it? But little expensive rat, and, uh, until somebody can come up with a different name, he's, they're gonna continue calling it the Stefan, um, kangaroo rat. That's all I have on that report.
Great, thank you. We have, um, Mayor Pro Tembaka on the Riverside County Transportation Commission.
Thank you so much. At the board meeting, staff provided traffic data for the 91 toll express lanes project. For the month of December, more than 1.1 million vehicles use the facility, exceeding projections by more than 40%. This equates to almost 38,000 vehicles on a daily basis. Year-to-date, in fiscal year 1718, over 7.2 million vehicles have traveled through the corridor with higher-than-expected usage. RCTC staff will be studying, um, the choke points. And I'm sure that anyone that goes on the 91, you'll know where, where they are. And, uh, they'll be recommending modifications, which may include additional lanes near the Green River and extending to the toll lanes further south on Interstate 15. So look for improvements. I know that, um, when they first opened up the, um, 91 express lanes after the modifications, that, um, it would take you, I would say, a good 20 minutes just to wait. And when you get to the front, where you take off, you're, you're wondering what, what the, um, delay is. And what was happening at that time was that other cars were coming and cutting in line in front of everybody. So that's why everyone was waiting in the back. So they, uh, re, restripped the freeway, and they had the California Highway Patrol out there, and it, it, it served as a deterrent. So now we have, uh, faster access to the 91, and, uh, we'll be looking for some more improvements by adding lanes, maybe, uh, right before the 241, so cars can get on from Green River, where there's a big chokehold in the city of Corona. But, um, we're gonna be moving quicker.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tembaka. We have Riverside Transit Agency report by Councilmember Marquez.
Route 19 accounting for approximately eight to ten, eight to 10% of the total ridership system, RTA, um, buswide through the city. The bus route 19 will start intervals of 15 minutes on weekdays now. They added more buses, and every 30 minutes on weekends. Um, there was a lot of complaints that, um, it was taking the bus 30 to 45 minutes. So they did do a survey, and they did, um, find out that, um, they needed to add more buses. So they have. So it's every 15 minutes on weekdays and every 30 minutes on weekends. So that's pretty good. This bus, um, travels through Paris Transit Center to the Marina Valley Mall, primarily along Paris and Centennial Boulevard. Also, RTA's travel training program, which begun in 2011, has served over 1,800 people and provided for over 380,000 bus rides. This program is for people with disabilities and/or older adults who want to learn how to travel safely and independently using public transportation. Travel tran, uh, travel training is a free self-paced process where any individual, regardless of age or ability, can ride on the, on, on this RTA fixed route. Contact the RTA for further information. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Marquez. Um, we have School District slash City Joint Task Force, Mayor Pro Tembaka.
Okay, uh, today we had our meeting, um, in the afternoon. It's a lunch meeting. And we had, um, our police department there. We had, um, Marina Valley Unified, Valverde Unified, our police department, and our after-school program agency, Think Together. And, um, our police department is gonna be training everyone in the school district, every single person that, um, can be held accountable in active shooter training. Um, unfortunately, it's, it's, uh, more common now, and it's not something that we want to expose our, our kids to, but it's, it's a reality. So we're, we're, our police department is gonna train everyone on what to do in case anything happens in our schools. We hear a lot about it, but, and we have to be ready, and we have to train our kids. Learn as much as you can about what the training is, when it's gonna take place, and, um, become responsive and, um, encourage your kids to pay attention and learn to remain safe while at school. Uh, the school district announced that community meetings will be held for the 2018, 2019 school year for a local control and accountability, accountability plan. And they will be meeting with the parents, students, and residents for input on how, uh, specific actions the district is gonna take to achieve their vision and goals. The proposed focus areas for the upcoming school year will include K to third grade literacy in math and reading intervention, and focused schools, school climate equity. Meetings will be offered at three different locations, and, uh, the community will be given time to, uh, give their input. And it's very important to become involved and give your input on what you as a community is looking for as far as the local spending. The Riverside Community College District is updating their strategic plan utilizing, uh, strengths, they call it SWATs, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats analysis. To assist with this analysis, community members are being sought to provide input. In conjunction with the Riverside Community College District, the Marina Valley College will also be updating their strategic plan and is requesting feedback from any and all individuals. The Transportation Division staff are working on a city-side pedestrian safety program to enhance the crosswalks on Indian from Sunnymead Boulevard to Cottonwood Avenue. Thank you.
Okay, and we have, um, Councilmember Geiba for Southern California Association of Governments, SCAG?
Thank you. Um, so, today, uh, I had the, uh, opportunity of sitting on the sub, I have five subcommittees within SCAG that I sit on, so I teleconference from those subcommittees out of the Riverside SCAG office. So today was our, our Legislative Communications and Membership Committee, uh, very extensive that we're going through. Uh, so I'll just give you some quick, brief updates on these. Um, the membership, uh, we, we approved $25,000 for Mobility 21. Some of you know what those are. Uh, membership Coalition for America's Gateways Trade Corridor, $6,500, and sponsorship for Mobility 21 2018 Summit, $5,000. Uh, SCAG participates and has been met, um, original members for many of these, and that's why we continue to sponsor them at the same time. So it was a unanimous approval by the entire committee. State and federal legislative priorities, there's a long list of our priorities. What I would ask you to do is, if you go to the, um, Marina Valley's website, and you can go to my bio, Jeff Geiba, Councilmember Geiba, and we've put a couple of, uh, links in my bio. So when it mentions I sit on SCAG, then you can click the link. It'll take you to the SCAG website and to some of these, uh, uh, agendas, because they're very thick, they're very heavy and very detailed. This meeting alone was like two hours. So, um, and then one that I mentioned before, and I'm just gonna remind the public of it again, it's a very, we overwhelmingly, the, the committee is recommending to the, uh, regional council, which I also sit on, uh, for the, I think it's gonna be March 3rd, the first Thursday in March, when we meet together on that one. AB 1759 by McCarty, very dangerous bill, what it's saying basically, and, and you guys can read it for yourself, but I'll give it as close as I can. We're opposing it. SCAG's opposing it. League of Cities is opposing it. Uh, and it's because if you don't fit, if you don't meet your housing element according to what the state decides, they're gonna withhold your SB 1 money, which is not part of the deal when they pass SB 1. So go ahead and check that one out. Again, if you didn't get it, it's AB 1759 by McCarty. Uh, very important that the city kind of gets up on that if you haven't already. Then we're releasing, um, we've agreed to release the draft 2018 Public Participation Plan for Public Review, very extensive document. Again, if you went to the agenda, uh, on my, on the SCAG website, you can actually preview the, a document. Uh, so it's recommended to be approved, to the release for the proposed draft 2018 Public Participation Plan for a 60-day public review and comment period. Very detailed piece of information. We also went over the federal budget updates. It's a wish list. Uh, Trump Administration Infrastructure Plan, it's a wish list. Bills of interest, one in particular, SCR 90 by Roth. Um, it's, deals with the interchange and the money that he got from the agreements over there. Also, uh, June 2018 statewide ballot measures to look at, Proposition 68, Also, June two thousand and eighteen statewide ballot measures to look at, Proposition sixty-eight through seventy-two. They're trying to qualify them for the June ballot, probably because it's the strongest opportunity for passage. We are looking at a position on Proposition sixty-nine. You might wanna update on that if you like. Again, go to the website, click the link, I mean, go to my bio, click the link, and you'll get that. We have a legislative tracking report. The city also has a legislative tracking report, because we have a person in here that involves themselves in that. On the sixth, seventh, and the eighth, I will be up in Sacramento with SCAG, meeting with legislators. Sixth is our meeting, so Jackie, Pat, you know that I'll be calling in on that one. So they'll get you my hotel reservations and everything when I get up there on the sixth, so that I can call in for the, for this. My next meeting is tomorrow. The bylaws and resolutions Subcommittee, again, I won't go over, because I haven't been to it, but as you can see, we go over our bylaws on a regular basis, and I get a lot of input. If you want to shoot me, if you, anybody wants to review those before, my meeting is at one o'clock, I'll be down at Riverside. It is an open meeting. If anybody wants to join me in Riverside at the SCAG office from one to two o'clock, it might go longer, it might go shorter, you're more than welcome to. It's a public meeting, and it's publicly noticed. And, but we'll be teleconferencing, so bring your phone, so you can plug in and listen at the same time, because theirs doesn't seem to work yet. The new building isn't really doing much good on that one. And then, last but not least, the middle to later part of March, I will be at a conference in Yosemite for four days with SCAG as well. So that's my report.
Thank you. We have two more reports. We have a city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items for the council this evening. First, one of our speakers expressed some concern over information availability for people in the community who might be particularly at risk in these cold temperatures. As you know, we have a homeless resources guide, and that's available on our city website, and that talks about locations designated as heating or cooling centers that assist seniors and other at-risk individuals during periods. That's it. The mayor's holding it up. Can we get a close-up, guys?
Rafael, Rafael, it's this one, I'll give you this one.
And that's got a lot of helpful information, including that. Second item, another speaker this evening expressed some concerns over the release of city council agendas five days in advance of each meeting. I think it's really important to publicly state that the law requires that agendas be published only seventy-two hours prior to a meeting. The vast majority of public agencies publish these agendas only seventy-two hours in advance. By providing five-days' advance notice, Moreno Valley far exceeds the legal requirements and provides transparency at a level that's much higher than provided by other local agencies throughout our region. And the last thing I want to tell you about, if I may, I'd like to begin with a thank you to the city council for your investment in our city library system. Your new branch at Moreno Valley Mall opened on December twenty-first, and it's been a very, very busy place ever since. I'd like to just take a minute to share some key statistics about service being provided at your newest branch. First, the patrons, the, we're seeing a lot of folks coming there, adults, ranging from their early twenties to late forties, lots of families with children, age six and under, and teens. And the, the, the most primary use of the library space, studying and computer usage, as well as Wi-Fi. When do they come? Well, our patrons show up, tend to show up earlier, on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and they want to stay a little later on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And in the month of January, nearly two thousand, nearly two thousand of our items at that branch were checked out, about two-thirds of our entire collection there. That's a busy place. The most popular items are children's books, wonderful, kids are developing a love for reading at an early age, and DVDs. Our peak hours are two to three P.M. and five to six P.M. We had nine programming events in January, storytimes, computer classes, and family storytimes, again, reading together with our youngsters. And what our library staff is doing is watching very closely to get data on the items that are being checked out, so that they can use that information as they determine what material to buy as we continue to expand the collection. So again, thank you to the council for expanding, for doubling the number of libraries in our city by opening the Moreno Valley branch, and I hope that information's helpful to you.
Thank you. City Attorney's Report.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers, very briefly, few items. First one, our office will be conducting some mandatory training for those of you who have not taken it yet. I think the city clerk will be contacting you, and that training will be available both for you and for staff. Secondly, with help of Community Development Department and Public Works, we've sent a letter out to property owners, and a letter will be going out, it's composed, I think it's gonna be in the mail, to commercial property owners and property management firms, basically just reaffirming the state of the cannabis regulations and prohibitions as it is right now and as it potentially may be in the future, just to make sure that everybody understands that at this point in time, there is no permission to operate any commercial cannabis activity in the city. In line with that, we've obviously been working pursuant to your direction in getting the regulations drafted. I know planning staff has been working very hard, and as has the finance department with our assistance. I think Planning Commission on Thursday will be having a first look at proposed Chapter Nine zoning regulations, which will eventually come to you, I think, in March. We have been working on shutting down and resolving the unlawful existing dispensaries, collected some additional settlement amounts to recoup the fees that the code enforcement in our office has incurred in those efforts. And lastly, I will be working with staff and meeting with both with the appointed, new appointed members, just to go over some of the Brown Act and other things that maybe help for them as they move forward on their new endeavors, as well as attending some of the board meetings and clarifying some of the board responsibilities and authority under the code as formed by the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. So that brings us to reports and comments from councilmembers who did not speak earlier, and we have Councilmember Geiba.
Thank you. Keep it brief. It's Paul Maris, you're absolutely correct. You were giving misinformation, so I'll correct it again. When I proposed back then to consolidate a lot of these boards and commissions into like-minded groupings, much as we've already done with one of them, and the only one I actually proposed to eliminate was the utility commission. Other than that, it was a very detailed map on how we could make this a more productive commissions and committees for the city. I wrote that myself, and I think if you went back to that staff report, you would see that it was in line with what we've been discussing, and what Roy has even been mentioning. It was something that was implemented and brought forward by myself, because, quite honestly, our staff was spending a lot of time on all the different ones, so if we consolidate them into like-minded ones, then we could have probably a number, an extra one or two if people wanted to be on those commissions, but we would have less commissions for the staff to have to deal with, going to them, writing the agendas, all the things that they do, and they could concentrate and focus on the things that are, you know, that they're already overwhelmed with in some cases. So I just wanted to set that clear for you. As far as myself, I don't have much to say. When I come back from my committees and stuff next month, all the places I'm going with SCAG, Sacramento, Yosemite, Los Angeles, and League of Cities work, I will update you on that as well. But you can always go to those websites, download that information just simply by going to the marinovalley.org, and go to my bio, and then you'll find the links in there that we've put in there, so that you can find those quickly and easily. And God bless you all, have a nice evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Marquez.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Well, happy notes here. Last week, I went out with the Salvation Army to, on that program that we're hooked up with, for the homeless cleanup to city. Well, we had three, there was three homeless guys that had been working several weeks with the, with Salvation Army and the city. The fourth guy, I guess he decided that wasn't for him, so he kind of walked off and said, "I'm not coming back." But these three homeless guys, you wouldn't believe it, how happy they were. They, I mean, every time they said something, it was positive, positive. "Um, I gotta get my driver license, I can't wait to get my first paycheck." And, you know, I talked to one guy, and I says, "Well, how did you, how do you get paid?" And he says, "I got a credit card, my first credit card I ever had, and I'll be able to use it to buy stuff, you know, when I get paid." So I asked him, "Well, why don't you go out and talk to your other friends out here?" And he says, "They don't wanna listen, but once we show them what we have, they might come aboard." So it's, it's pretty, would you say, it's a nice program. We did talk to a couple of homeless people while we were out there, Vincent and myself, and there's some of them just don't wanna budge. They just, Vince asked him, "Well, why don't you come with me, and I'll drive you down and get your ID card?" Nah, they didn't wanna, they wouldn't budge. So Vince says, "These are the people that just, you can't communicate with them, you can't get them out there." So the program is working. I'm glad I was able to spend the day with them picking up some trash. I went on a tour on the new KitchenAin Utility Station, which is unbelievable. You know, you see those little wires going down, the cables going down, but you wouldn't believe how much voltage they hold. I mean, you're talking about thousands of voltage going through those lines, and how it's converted down, broken down, and how it's divided within the city, and very interesting. I learned quite a bit of it. So if you're, have free time, you wanna go out and take a tour, get with the utility personnel, and they'll take you for a tour out there. What you don't wanna do is, you don't wanna touch anything out there. You put your hands in your pocket, they walk around, and just don't touch anything. That's all I can tell you. Tom, on the library, some residents have asked, "Well, how can I donate to the library? Books, magazines?" There's a process to do it. All the books gotta be scanned or viewed by the library personnel. So if you have a box of books that you wanna donate, drop them off at the Alessandra Library Station there. Don't take them up to the mall, because they won't accept them there. So you'll, you'll make a trip for nothing, but drop them off over here, they'll look at them, and if they're within reason, or they fit our criteria, they'll distribute them out to the other libraries. So that's for the residents who wanna donate books. And yeah, they almost did run out of books at the new library. Ivory, the lady who's in charge, had said that they were kind of scared that they were gonna run out of books and have to close the library down, but that was something else. That's, that's, I'm glad that the prior council and staff here decided to open one up over there. It's working very good. Next month, I'll be in Washington, D.C. It's a National League of Cities. If you don't know, I've been appointed to the Public Safety League of Cities for Riverside County, and I'll be representing the county and the city in Washington, D.C. And if anybody wants me to get an autograph of the president, just let me know, and I'll get some signatures from the president. Other than that, let's see here. Oh, yeah. What I like to do is, when I get back, I wanna sit down and with my colleagues and see if we can propose another rescue squad for the east end of town, or wherever the fire department would like to locate it. I've spoke to a lot of residents on the east end, and they had indicated that they heard that we had a rescue squad, and a tournament where it was located at. And they says, "Well, why can't we have one out here? Maybe we have a quicker response." As it is now, we respond quite, I mean, the fire department responds within minutes, but that one, one minute, thirty seconds can save a life by having a rescue squad available out here. So I'll be bringing that up for further discussion, and hopefully by June, July of this year, we could put it in our budget to purchase another squad. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
We have Councilmember Cabrera.
Thank you. So firstly, just wanna tell everyone, you know, stay warm out there, it's really cold this week. Also, try to take care of yourself, the flu is going around again. I tried to fight it for months, it finally got me. So just take care of yourself, please. Community cleanup is happening on March third. The Emerging Leaders Council is cleaning up a section of Cottonwood between Graham and, I think it's Indian, and then there will be a second cleanup that same day. Thank you to Public Works, Michael Wolf. There will be a second cleanup over off of Elm Court and Pepper Court. It's, it's off of JFK and Hickok, it's behind a mobile home community. Wait, I actually went there last week, I was invited by a church. We went out there to evangelize in that neighborhood, and I just, I saw, there was just trash everywhere, broken glass on the street, the sidewalks, everywhere. So I, as soon as I got there, I, this is the place that I wanna clean up. So that's happening on March third. If you would like to volunteer or join us, if you know anyone who wants to, you know, come along, reach out to me, and it'll also be on Facebook. Also, at the joint task force meeting today, Moreno Valley Unified was there, Dr. Kidsiora spoke about the Reading Across America and opportunities that there're gonna be, I forget the exact date, but I think it's next week, that there are opportunities to go read to students at elementary schools throughout, all throughout the city. So I'll be signing up for a couple of those, and I mean, that's important, you know, going out there and reading to these elementary students. It's something that I wanted to do, and this came up, so I was, I just said, "Thank you." You know, it was perfect timing. So if you get a chance to do that, and go look at the school board's website and find the locations, there's phone numbers, email addresses that you can contact, and, you know, go and read to some of these kids. It's pretty important, because a lot of these, these children, they just need someone to listen to them, and I've said this before. And there's this statistics, actually, the mayor shared this with me, and I've heard it many times since, that the correlation between the reading levels of a third, by the third grade, well, how does it go again, Mayor? It determines the prison population, you know, in the future.
Out of high school dropouts.
Yeah, so it's important that our children are able to read by the third grade or well before the third grade. Instead of, you know, sitting in front of the TV, that's one of my biggest pet peeves, when I see children sitting in front of the television, just off in a whole nother world. So the point is, if you see opportunity to help out these children, to read a book, or talk to them, or really just have that human connection, please do it. Also, bullying, this goes hand-in-hand with what happened in Florida. From my understanding, the nineteen-year-old kid, I mean, he didn't have his parents, his parents were not there. He didn't have help from anyone at the schools, although people tried helping him, there was really no, no support there. And I feel like he was, he was probably just isolated, you know, alone, and there were, there were probably ways of helping him, but the point is that bullying is one aspect that can lead people to do things like that. And also, we see a lot of teenagers taking their lives because of bullying. And so, the Emerging Leaders Council member who we appointed this evening, she is very um, she is very involved in, uh, anti-bullying group at her school. So that's something that I also want to get involved in as well when I make my next round of visits to these high schools in the city, uh, for anti-bullying and just try to, uh, uh, promote, uh, you know, more respect and care for, uh, for our colleagues. And lastly, um, I'm just very moved by the response now, a- after the, the shooting in Florida. I've been watching the videos of, uh, the survivors, uh, the students who are going on live, on, on national television and, you know, talking directly to Washington DC and addressing politicians like us. And asking for something to be done. Common sense changes to both, um, in my opinion, the gun laws and mental, uh, illness. It's both. It's not just one or the other. But it, it, it really moves me that, uh, the high school students have a voice and they're actually, uh, being heard, you know? And I'm, I'm also, I'm very close to that age group still. So, there will be organizing marches, I believe on March twenty-fourth, which is my birthday. Hopefully, there is one in Los Angeles and I'll be able to go out there and join them. And, um, I'll try to take some high school kids here and maybe even some college kids with me as well. So, um, I'm just glad to see that the youth is finally standing up. We do have a voice and we're finally speaking up and, and letting all the other generations before us know that we're here and we matter and we're going to demand changes. Everyone have a good night.
Mayor Portembaca?
Thank you.
Sorry, I forgot.
You forgot my name, okay. Okay, I, I just want to say, um, that I'm really happy that we finally got the appointments done and over with. And, uh, maybe we can get on with some different, uh, commissions and, and start filling them up. And, uh, for everyone that was not appointed, I would continue to encourage you to, uh, come to the planning commission meetings, to the Emerging Leaders Council, to the Parks, Trails and Recreation Boards. Come to the meetings. It doesn't, just because you're not on the board, if you're not appointed, it doesn't mean that you cannot come to the meetings. It does not mean that you cannot participate. We need you. You need to be there. Please come and please participate and give of yourself, give of your ideas. We need you there. It doesn't mean that you have to be appointed. Um, the Homeless to Work Program, I'm glad that, um, our mayor brought that back from one of the conferences he attended in, uh, was that Albuquerque?
Sorry, it was in Florida, but the program was in Albuquerque? I met the mayor of Albuquerque in Florida.
All right. So it was first implemented in, in, uh, Albuquerque before Moreno Valley. So I, I'm just glad that we have it here and that, uh, we're, uh, we got off to a good start and that we're doing something. And thank you, city manager, for, um, letting the community know that we do have not only the cooling places in the summer, but the heating places during the cold months. So please come and, um, warm up and we'll do what we can for our residents here in the city of Moreno Valley. I also want to remind everyone that this Saturday is the Moreno Valley Unified School District's Reading Festival and it starts at nine o'clock and the schools are scheduled every hour. So please come, please, um, you don't have to have kids in the district, but come and encourage the, the young folks that are there, um, to read and to continue reading and, and, uh, to grow their love for books. And maybe we can walk them up to the library because there's still a lot of people that don't know that we have our satellite library at the mall. So, um, come, join us and we have a lot to celebrate in the city of Moreno Valley. We have a great staff. Our city manager is hitting the ground running and there's a lot more coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I just want to piggyback on that as well. Uh, thank you to our city manager as well for doing a great, excellent job. Also, our city attorney and just the staff in general, you know, thank you, you know, for really being on the ball and, uh, with a lot of, uh, no, we throw a lot of projects at you and, and the strategic plan that we have is pretty comprehensive, but, you know, you guys adapt very well. So thank you. I will be appointing Mayor Portembaca as the voting delegate and Councilmember Cabrera as the alternate to the SCAG 2018 Regional Conference and General Assembly on May third and May fourth, 2018. I also like to, for my closing comments, just mention that, um, I'm thrilled that we were able to, uh, make those amendments for the Higher Grad Program. This was another, uh, program that I, uh, brought up last year, the Higher Grad. But the amendments are going, I, I believe, going to allow more of the business community to really participate. You know, unfortunately, I think requiring them to do forty hours, you know, kind of, you know, made them think twice and, and those kinds of things. So I think if we lowered it to twenty hours, I think we're going to get more participation from the business community to hire more, uh, graduates. We also expanded it to certificates as well. So it's not just a college degree. It can be someone from in the, in our COE program, ROP program. If they recently graduated, then the business, um, also benefits and the employee benefits as well. I'm also excited that, uh, we approved the March Air Force, um, sponsorship. I think that's very, very important, like many of the speakers mentioned. Also, um, this last, uh, week, I was able to attend a basketball tournament with Think Together. Uh, if many of you don't know, Think Together is the after-school program, uh, that the city contracts. So, you know, we contract with Think Together to provide after-school, uh, for, care for our kids. And, uh, they actually did and implemented a sports program. So I'm really thrilled because they have really come a long ways. Starting in two thousand thirteen, when I got on the council, I took a tour of some of the, um, after-school sites. And there's forty-four school sites, uh, in Moreno Valley, mixed with Moreno Valley and Valverde. And one of the things I noticed was that they were lacking the arts, you know, in the after-school and also sports. So, um, you know, it's been, you know, a process, but now I'm really excited that they're really doing a lot. You know, a lot of different programs in sports, a lot of arts programs after-school, um, in addition to the help with the homework and the care and the supervision. So they really have come a long way and the kids just really, really loved it, their tournament. Uh, this, uh, Friday, I'll be, uh, providing remarks, uh, to Valaby High School, uh, for their water polo team. Uh, it was postponed from January, so I know the kids are excited about that. And I also just want to mention that, you know, I really believe that civic engagement, you know, having the community engaged and, and knowing what's happening in the city is important. You know, coming to the council meetings, you know, I mean, that, that's one. But also reaching out to each of us as well. Um, I have open office hours, you know, every other Friday. Sometimes, you know, and it's kind of sad, but, you know, I'll only get three people. Uh, three residents that come or maybe one, you know, and sometimes it's the same, you know? And, and that's okay, you know, if it's the same, but, you know, uh, we should be getting more, you know? So there should be more people coming. So I would really encourage, you know, if you have concerns or issues, uh, to do that and reach out to everyone here. The boards and the commissions, you know, the same thing, you know, uh, we need your input. And maybe you didn't, you know, receive an appointment to a particular one, but maybe there's another one, you know, that is a, a better fit or where you have more skills in that area. So feel free to reach out to me, uh, reach out to each of your council members as well. I think, um, everyone, uh, is responsible in recruiting. You know, it's not just, you know, myself, you know, I believe it's, you know, the city council, everyone. Anyone in the c- community in the city that knows someone that would like to serve, encourage them to fill out the application, um, and that way they can get appointed. Also, I attended a city slash, uh, school district forum, uh, with Councilmember Cabrera last Saturday. And really the purpose of it was just to show to the community, uh, that we're coming together with the school district and we want to hear their concerns, both city-related and school district-related. And then just to show that collaboration, you know, that's happening. You know, there are kids too, you know, there are the kids in the Moreno Valley Unified, but obviously after-school, you know, they're the kids, you know, that are living in the city of Moreno Valley. So we really need to be aware of issues that are going on and, and just support, uh, each other. And then, um, I'll also be having a telephone, uh, town hall, uh, March twenty-ninth at six PM. Um, and again, this is for civic engagement, you know, just to really, uh, hear from the community and, you know, hear your, your needs and your concerns. So please, uh, feel free to call into that. Uh, we'll be making phone calls as well, but once I find the, the phone number that you can call into, I'll post it on my Facebook page and then you can just, um, save your name and your phone number and then they'll actually, uh, call you. I also, um, uh, in closing, I would like to, uh, adjourn, uh, the meeting in memory of the victims of the Florida shooting. Okay? So we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting in their memory. Thank you.